I'm William Holtz with Lake TV and I'm excited to welcome you to a very important night of local forums right here on Lake TV presented by the O'Sullivan Brewster Group with RE/MAX Lake of the Ozarks. Also want to thank the Camlinton and Lake Area Chamber of Commerce for collaborating with us on tonight's forum. Also got to thank our official radio partner, the Key Radio Station, as well as our official news partner, lakeexpo.com. Now, as much as we all complain and let our opinion be known on national politics, it should go without saying that our local elected officials are actually the ones that will affect us the most. Tonight's forum is going to include candidates for Lake Ozark Aldermen as well as the School of the Osage School Board. With that being said, we applaud you for tuning in and getting involved and staying informed. Tonight's forum wouldn't be possible without the generosity of our sponsor. Tonight's broadcast right here on Lake TV is presented by O'Sullivan Brewster Group, RE/MAX Lake of the Ozarks, and brought to you by Bridle Cave, Rough Water Dock, Central Ozarks Medical Center, lakeexpo.com, the Key Radio Station, and of course, the Camlinton and Lake Area Chamber of Commerce. Now, sit back and get ready for a great night of getting to know the candidates. At this point, I'm honored to turn it over to our moderator for tonight, broadcasting live from the Lake Area Chamber at Wilmore Lodge, Luke Hagedorn.
Thank you, Will. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2022 Meet the Candidates Forum for the School of the Osage Board of Education with the election to be held on Tuesday, April 5th. This joint forum, live from historic Wilmore Lodge, is the result of a collaborative effort of the Camlinton Area Chamber of Commerce, the Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, and is presented by Lake TV and Key Radio. We welcome all the viewers who are joining us either online, live on Lake TV, and greetings to our listeners on 98.3 Key Radio, keyradio.live, or on the free app available on Google Play in the App Store. It's also good to be working with KB again. Three candidates have filed for the two seats with three-year terms. We are pleased to have all three candidates join us this evening. First, Derek Steen, Kelly Frisella, and Stacy Neal. On behalf of Lake TV, Key Radio, the chambers, and all the voters in the School of the Osage District, we thank you for your attendance and participation, and we look forward to getting to know each of you a bit better and learn your thoughts and views on the school district. Before we get started, we do have a few ground rules to cover. Each candidate will be allowed two minutes for opening and closing statements with one minute to respond to each of the selected questions. We do have a timekeeper and a clock up front. Once the question is complete and the response has begun, the clock will start. Please be aware of your time, or I will be obliged to make you aware. If there are no questions or concerns, we will start with our opening comments. Again, each candidate will have two minutes. Determined by a random draw, our first speaker tonight will be Stacy Neal. Stacy, you have two minutes to speak directly to your voters.
Great, thank you so much. First, I want to thank everyone here for the opportunity to have a conversation. I want to thank everyone for taking time out of their busy days to tune in now or later or sometime on the Facebook pages, the YouTube pages. I know we're all busy and I appreciate you taking the time to get familiar with us and make a good choice for the school board. I do hope overall that you turn out to vote and speak your mind when the day comes. My name is Stacy Neal. I am a mother and a wife. I have two kids in the Osage District. I have a full-time job. I work for the state of Missouri. I am the Director of Accounting. I'm a certified public accountant. And I, before this year, was not overly engaged. I spent time paying attention to what my kids were involved with, going to band concerts, volunteering for choir events, cheering on the teams at the football games, the basketball games, just engaging, but engaging through my children. It has only been this year that I've started to pay attention to policies, activities going on through the board, the superintendent's office, the direction of the school. And while I'm so excited to be part of this family, there's many, many good things going on. Our kids are amazing, our teachers are talented. I do have a few concerns with some of the policy directions. For that reason, I said, well, I don't want to be just a complainer. I want to put my hat in and see if I can help change the direction potentially or enforce many of the good things that are going on, to continue to have great opportunities for our kids, to continue to have great academics for our children. Again, I thank you for joining us today.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, determined by random draw, for the School of the Osage Board of Education will be Mr. Derek Steen.
All right. Thank you, Luke. Thank you, Chamber and Lake TV. As Luke mentioned, my name is Derek Steen, and I am the only incumbent candidate running for school board. This will be, I'll be finishing my first term on the Osage School Board here in about a month, so looking forward to a second term if reelected. As I mentioned, my name's Derek Steen, and I am an Osage graduate. My wife is also an Osage graduate. We both graduated from Osage in 95 and 96. We have three kids that are Osage students, actually two that are in high school, one that's graduated and is currently an elementary education teacher major at University of Missouri. Professionally, I went to University of Missouri and got an engineering degree and have spent the last 22 years basically using that degree to serve farmers and the agricultural industry in Missouri with policy and environmental issues that they face, as well as really that the entire state faces across and including here at the Lake of the Ozarks. So, 22 years as an environmental and agricultural policy director, currently employed by the Missouri Corn Growers Association as their Director of Public Policy. I just kind of wanted to sort of conclude here, just kind of to summarize a few important themes that I hope to be able to get across today. Number one, teachers are the backbone of our school. Students are clearly our number one priority, but our teachers do form the foundation of our school. And so you're going to hear a lot of emphasis from me about teachers. Secondly, I believe leadership and character matters. It matters both for the school board and for our staff, but also for our student body. Thirdly and lastly, I believe schools are an integral part of our community. And I know that how we and our neighbors and our community works through our differences speaks a lot to the heart and the soul of our community, and I believe the Lake of the Ozarks is a great community. Thank you, and I look forward to this forum.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker with an opening comment will be Kelly Frisella. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Luke, and thank you again, Lake TV, for having us all and giving us the opportunity to have conversation about School of the Osage. Little background on me, I am married. My husband, he is a business owner here in the community. He's lived here for about 20 years. I am an optometrist by trade, so I received my bachelor's degree in agronomy way back when, in 97. And then I went on to go to optometry school in Memphis, so I'm an optometrist by trade. I had a private practice, so I started my own small business in Southern Illinois about 20 years ago. I had that practice, it grew, I wound up selling it to my business partner at the time. And now I'm currently employed as a, I'm an optometrist on staff for a tech company that sells software. It's an electronic health records company that sells software to optometry and ophthalmology practices in the United States and Canada. So, my background is such that I have both small business and more of a, now really more of a corporate role in the workplace. We have two children, my husband and I do, so I did want to say hello to my boys, Tyler and Tanner. They are in first and second grade at Heritage and love school, and we've been proud supporters of Osage. And really, really, I do want to just take a minute to give a shout out to the teachers for making that such a special place. I greatly appreciate the fact that they do look forward to going to school every day, and it's a place they love and feel safe at, so I think that that's very important. In terms of why I'm running, ultimately, I would like to see 2022 be the year of the parent, where the parent voice is heard. I'm advocating for more board transparency, and I would like to see more, I feel like it takes a village to raise children well, and I think if we can have community interest and community participation to making the school a better place, it's going to be a much better experience for our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We put a call out to the community for pertinent questions regarding this particular election. We had a great number of questions submitted and had to make tough choices to pare it down in the interest of time. Candidates, we each have one minute to respond, and we will rotate the speaking order each time. Starting us off on question number one, Derek Steen, what inspired you to become a board member? Is there a particular issue or a set of issues that motivated you to run for a seat on the Board of Education?
So, there isn't one specific issue. Obviously, I'm the incumbent, so I've been on the school board for three years already, and I've certainly enjoyed my time being able to help direct and lead the School of the Osage and through a time that frankly was, you know, probably unprecedented in decades with the COVID and the pandemic. But really, I'm on the school board and I'm rerunning for the school board because I believe that School of the Osage is one of the top public schools in the state, and it's important for me because of my background, the fact that I've lived here all my life, I want to keep it that way. I want to keep School of the Osage in the position that it's at right now. Osage invested heavily in me as a student, it's invested in my family, and so it's, you know, it's my desire to be able to invest back into School of the Osage and pour, you know, pour some energy back into all the teachers and staff and administrators that helped me along the way.
Thank you, sir. Stacy Neal, what inspired you to want to become a board member? Is there a particular issue or a set of issues that motivated you to run for a seat on the Board of Education?
Yes, so I was originally engaged and woken up to pay more attention to what was going on in Osage due to the contract with Panorama. I think we're all very familiar with that now, and I was, I became very concerned about it. I appreciate that the board chose to end that contract, but the fact that it occurred once, it made me start wondering what else might possibly be going on. Since back in November, I have been looking at the data sharing that we have at School of the Osage. I believe it's extremely important to protect our children and their data, what they are entering into their iPads, who has access to that data. And I think it's very important that we take a very hard look at every single third-party contract that we have, a third-party software contract where data can be accessed by other entities that are not the people I trust at Osage.
Thank you very much. On the same question, Miss Kelly Frisella, what inspired you to become a board member? Is there a particular issue or a set of issues that inspired you to run for a seat on the Board of Education?
For me, it's, it was more or less wanting to make sure that I'm giving back to the community and taking an active role in my children. So, I just, I felt compelled to go on ahead and get involved. It's my understanding that there's not been a lot of change on the board, and I think that having some new opinions and new perspectives and new ideas would be a great thing. I also, my children are small, so it's, we're very, very vested in the district, and I want to see good things happen for many, many years to come. So ultimately, that's really why I opted to go on ahead and throw my hat in the ring for the race.
Thank you very much. Moving on to question number two, and Stacy Neal will start us off on this one. The Board of Education votes annually on the school calendar. What is your general philosophy regarding this important board function? Is there anything in particular you would like to see implemented?
That's a great question, a hot topic, of course, at Osage. Lots of strong opinions for both the four-day and the five-day calendar. Personally, I want to see a calendar that has built-in snow days. I want our kids to have the excitement of wondering, are we going to get a day off tomorrow or are we going to go to school? I do not like any of the AMI days being included. From what I've witnessed, the AMI days or the virtual learning days don't produce a lot of great learning for our kids. It seems like it's either, you know, busy work or not enough instruction when you're young to get a good day of learning in. I think in order to accomplish both of those things, you have to go back to a five-day. I understand that there's some desire by teachers or administrators to go with a four-day, but I think we need to make sure to focus on what is best for the learning of our kids in the district, and I believe that's a five-day school week.
Very good. Kelly, the Board of Education votes annually on the school calendar. What is your general philosophy regarding this important board function? Is there anything in particular you would like to see implemented?
So, with regards to the school calendar this year, one of the things that I feel strongly about is to survey parents and ask them what they're wanting. I too feel like the four-day school week is very, very hard on my kids being so small, keeping them in the routine. Sometimes it takes a day when they start school, and then they just, they're really off to just three solid days of being in that routine. And what I will say is, since March, in particular with all of the snow days, it was incredibly hard trying to keep kids in a routine, and when they're out of their routine, it makes it very, very difficult to learn. So, my comment would be, or my stance would be, I would prefer a five-day school week over four-day, and I would also like to see a lot more participation and feedback requested on behalf of the board by the parents. We have a lot of working parents that are heavily, heavily impacted and affected on Mondays when their children are at home, so I'd like to see more inclusion from the board and with regards to soliciting feedback from all of the school district families.
Thank you very much. Derek Steen, the Board of Education votes annually on the school calendar. What is your general philosophy regarding this important board function? Is there anything in particular you would like to see implemented?
Yeah, and this is obviously a great question, one that's, you know, I think I've probably received as a school board member as much feedback and questions about this topic as probably any other topic in the last three years, and rightfully so. It was, it's a big change. It was a big change when we made it as a board and as a school, and I certainly understand that there's growing pains with going from a five-day to four-day. But as far as my philosophy, I support a student calendar that best advances our mission. It's pretty, pretty simple. We have a lot of challenges in front of us as a school. Actually, all schools will have a lot of challenges in front of us, and I want a calendar that helps us overcome those challenges, helps us effectively address those. At Osage, we implemented the four-day student week for a number of reasons, but certainly was about enhancing our quality, the quality of learning, and enhancing student engagement, our student performance, and to retain and attract world-class teachers. It really was that simple. That was why we implemented, and I supported that four-day week. And as far as moving forward, each year is a new year, and I will evaluate this issue each and every year on its face, and if there's reason to believe that our mission will be better served by a five-day calendar versus a four-day calendar, I'm going to listen and I'm going to be willing to make changes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to question number three, Kelly Frisella will lead us off on this one. Teachers across the country are leaving their profession through early retirement, career changes, are never even considering a career in education in the first place. What would you say to a current teacher in the district who might be considering a different path?
Please don't go. Our children need, we really need great teachers. We need, we need good leaders. Our teachers are one of the most, well, I think they are the most valuable, most important asset in the district, and they're certainly one of the most influential on our children in terms of molding them. So, I would, I would just say, you know, what can we do? Are we doing enough to make them feel valued? Do they feel like their voice is heard? Do they feel supported? And what can we do better to make sure that they feel like they're getting the support that they deserve and that they want to stay? Without them, our children cannot succeed, and if we don't have good teachers leading our school, we're, the community is going to, unfortunately, they're going to, the community is going to pay the price in the end. So, we want, we want to make sure that the school continually moves forward and we keep great teachers.
Thank you very much. Derek Steen, teachers across the country are leaving the profession through early retirement, career changes, are never even considering a career in education in the first place. What would you say to a current teacher in the district who might be considering a different path?
So, it's, I'm just realizing that I forgot in my intro to tell everyone that my wife is also a teacher at Osage, and she's, I believe, in her 20th year at Osage as a teacher. And so this is something, obviously, that we hear, I hear in my household, and then of course, my oldest daughter is one to be an elementary education teacher, and I've got other family that's teachers. And you know, obviously, what I want to tell everyone that's thinking about this is, if not you, then who? I mean, we do need teachers. We, you know, what kinds of, what kinds of children will we have in the future if we don't have public schools and don't have teachers? But I think the key here is to prevent, prevent this from happening in the first place. We've got to put in measures, we've got to take steps to ensure that we don't lose those teachers in the first place, and that way they don't have to question their profession. So, teacher retention and recruiting will be one of our top challenges in the future, not just here at Osage, but at all schools. And so we need to do everything in our power to build and sustain a work environment that teachers want to teach in and that they can excel in.
Thank you very much. Stacy Neal, teachers across the country are leaving the profession through early retirement, career changes, are never even considering a career in education in the first place. What would you say to a current teacher in the district who might be considering a different path?
So, I think the first thing would be to acknowledge that there's a lot of difficult situations that are going right now, both in our schools, in our communities, in the economy as a whole. There's a lot of people that are rethinking what they want to do and rethinking where their priorities are. So I think it's important to acknowledge that, you know, it's okay if you're having those thoughts, that it's not a problem, but to try to remind them that they're so important to us, they're so important to our school, and that there's very few instances when you can make such a difference in the next generation, in the education of our kids. You can make such a difference as a teacher, and the teachers that I know truly are engaged in their profession for that reason. They want to help the next generation be amazing people, and there's very few occupations that you can do that outside of the teaching profession.
Thank you very much. Moving on to question number four, and Derek Steen will lead us off once again. Derek, one role of the school is to prepare the next generation of the workforce. How can the School of the Osage foster a better relationship with the business community to ensure workforce needs are met in the future?
Yeah, another great question, Luke. And really, I think, you know, Lake of the Ozarks has a diverse business, diverse business group, a lot of different industries, a lot of different places where students at School of the Osage can interact with business leaders and businesses across the Lake area. Clearly, you know, one of my goals at Osage is to advance and improve our college and career readiness for our students, and really, that can, that can start even in the middle school, making sure that we have programs in place and leadership programs in place and career programs in place that allows students to get a feel for the career opportunities that are going to be ahead of them when they graduate. And some of those are certainly right here in Lake of the Ozarks, and some might not be. But I think the school does have a lot, a lot to improve on in that space, a lot to build on, and I look forward to working on that moving forward.
Thank you very much. Stacy Neal, one role of the school is to prepare the next generation of the workforce. How can the School of the Osage foster better relationship with the business community to ensure future workforce needs are met?
So, I think Osage does a great job right now of providing lots of opportunities for our students. They can get a very well-rounded education, they can, there's opportunities for them regardless of what they want to do in the future. There's specialized education that Osage allows right now, and those are all great things. I think we need to continue enhancing those opportunities. But I do think that we need to put less emphasis on the use of technology. Our kids are amazing at technology as a general rule. I know when I break the TV, the satellite, or my phone, I go to my teenagers and have them fix it for me. So I think they are amazing at tech. What they're not quite as amazing at is interpersonal communication skills, having a conversation with someone, being comfortable picking up the phone and calling and asking for something. And I think our school will benefit our children and the community and the workforce by helping kids get better at those type skills.
Thank you very much. Kelly Frisella, one role of the school is to prepare the next generation of the workforce. How can the School of the Osage foster better relationship with the business community to ensure future workforce needs are met?
One of the things that I would say is, again, with my husband being a small business owner and speaking to a lot of small business owners, it's no hidden secret that everyone's hungry for great, great employees, and certainly, there's going to be many businesses here locally that are going to welcome the opportunity to have a student come in and that they can mentor and give that student the opportunity to explore maybe a unique career path, perhaps it's something on the college track, maybe it's something more along the lines of a trade school. I know when I had my practice, I would have high school students come in all the time, and they were some of the brightest minds. I loved having the high school students come in and work in the practice because oftentimes, you know, they would be the ones that would be fixing my tech issues. And two, it gave me a chance to give them just some hands-on learning and the communication skillset that they're really going to need to be able to succeed as they go out into the, into college or into the workplace later. So, I think small business owners will welcome the opportunity to interact with the high school students in a mentorship-type program.
Thank you very much. Derek Steen, are you up or did you get this one? Oh, we got it. Yeah, screwed up. One role of the school is to prepare, oh no, we're starting, okay, we're moving on. Totally, all three of you got that one. I'm just not paying attention to my own notes here. We got it, we're fine. All right, Stacy, you were leading us off on this one. Studies show that fine arts improves and encourages kids' creativity, confidence, and perseverance while also developing academic motor and decision-making skills. How do you view the fine arts in the larger picture of public education?
I am a huge fine arts supporter. I actually was a band geek growing up, and my kiddos, when they started middle school, I just asked them to be involved with band or choir. It's a personal preference. I got great discipline, lot of opportunities to travel, be exposed to other cultures, other people, and it was a wonderful experience, and I wanted that for my children. This is one of the reasons why Osage is so amazing and why when we were looking for a school, we chose Osage for their great programs. So, I highly encourage everyone to be involved with the fine arts. I do my best to support the fine arts. I'm currently the Fine Arts Booster Treasurer, and if you are going to the district competition this Saturday, I will see you between 7:00 and 3:30. So, it's a really great program here at Osage, and I think that we should encourage all of our students to at least try it out.
Thank you very much. Kelly Frisella, studies show fine arts improves and encourages kids' creativity, confidence, and perseverance while also developing academic motor and decision-making skills. How do you view the fine arts in the larger picture of public education?
I feel fine arts is extremely important. For anybody that knows me personally, you know that I'm an accomplished pianist. I've played piano since I was four, and I've had a number of doors that have opened up for me as a result of that talent. I've played at church and weddings and all sorts of different things over the years, and it was a great way for me to have spending money throughout college and through grad school as well. I think that it's extremely important that our kids get exposed to those things, particularly because of all of the benefits that the fine arts can bring and help them with their academics and just with their emotional skills as well.
Thank you very much. Derek Steen, studies show that fine arts improves and encourages kids' creativity, confidence, and perseverance while also developing academic motor and decision-making skills. How do you view the fine arts in the larger picture of public education?
Boy, I tell you what, if I screw this answer up, I'm in big trouble. Because my sister, my older sister, Amy, is the choir director at the OSH High School, so I've got to get this one right, or I'm going to be in big trouble. So, I, my kids were all in choir, and they loved it. Their friends were in choir, and you know, there's a lot of great attributes about fine arts, whether it be band, choir, or art, or all the fine arts, theater. And you know, I think for me, it's about developing leadership, about developing discipline and character skills, important life skills that students really need, especially post-graduation. And I think those are all very important skills that you learn in some of those fine art programs, as well as athletics. And I don't want to leave out athletics because they're intricately twined, I think, with fine arts as well. So, there are a number of very important life skills that I think students get by participating in fine arts and as well as sort of a lifelong, lifelong memories after they graduate.
Thank you very much. Moving on to question number six, and Kelly Frisella will lead us off. How would you rate the quality of communication from the district to the community? What are some communication channels that you believe would be helpful? What are some communication channels that you believe would be helpful to use in the future?
I think this is one of the, one of the opportunities or areas that we have, easy opportunity to, to grow as, particularly with the Board of Education. So I think that in terms of communication, I would like to see there be more of a, a direct involvement with parents and with the community. I mean, we have a community of taxpayers, we have parents, and I think that parents are busy. I think it's really, really important that we do what we can to make them feel included. I would like to see us have the, all of the Board of Education meetings and all of the working sessions. I'd like to see those be livestreamed, and then I'd also like to see those be recorded and then available for viewing after the fact on, on YouTube. I think that there's a lot of teachers and a lot of parents that don't necessarily want to have to use logging in credentials to be able to access the, the board meeting. And I, I don't, quite honestly, I don't think that, that it should be that difficult. I think we should be able to, to offer that to the community, the parents, and to the teachers.
Thank you very much. Derek Steen, how would you rate the quality of communication from the district to the community? What are some communication channels that you believe would be helpful to use in the future?
Well, obviously, I absolutely think that there's room for improvement with communication. There's always going to be room, room for improvement in communication. Schools got to keep up with different sorts of, or pathways for communication. And, you know, I think going through two years of COVID and a pandemic, we realized very quickly that that was changing, that, that the, the ways we communicated in the past probably weren't going to cut it for the future. And certainly, this is a topic that's came up quite often at the school board meeting about the, the, the need to increase communication. And I think the board is more than willing to talk about that and make improvements where, where needed. I, you know, with regard to streaming, streaming the board meetings, I'm pretty open to those types of opportunities or options as far as making it more accessible. Personally, I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with streaming or recording our school board meetings. They are open to the public. People are able to come if they'd like. There shouldn't be any reason why we can't do that, too.
Thank you very much. And Stacy Neal, how would you rate the quality of communication from the district to the community? What are some communication channels that you believe would be helpful to use in the future?
So I think overall, there's really good things going on with communication. I do think we could improve communication, though. So things that are going really well. I personally really appreciate the weekly updates that we get from the superintendent regarding what's going on at the school. They include lots of links. I can click through if I have time to check out something else. It's, it's a very good opportunity for me to keep up to speed in a very quick, most of the time, 30-second review of those emails, and I really appreciate that. There are other things, such as the Fan Plan that's been recently started. I love the Fan Plan. You can get all of the activities in one place, one-stop shopping for us, instead of going to multiple different locations. We can figure out how to support other kids, maybe not just our kids' events, but that is an absolutely wonderful communication opportunity. There are other things I think we could do better. Right now, we limit communication at board meetings. They're only allowed at open meetings, not at work sessions. I don't see much difference between those two types of meetings. So I think we can do better by allowing public comment at every meeting. I think we can do better by making it simple to do public comment. And yeah, it's not talking, it's not counting down, but I probably talked about a minute now.
I think, I think we're there, but yeah.
Okay, cool.
I was, I was going to let you wrap that up, but yeah, we'll, we'll get on that next time.
Great, thanks.
Very good. You were respectful of the time, and I appreciate that, so we do have some time for a couple bonus questions here. We'll start back over the order again. Derek Steen, you will lead us off on this one. What program or department within the School of Osage District do you think needs more funding? Are there any areas of the budget where you could see some belt tightening applied?
Well, I, I think the, I'm going to start with the first part of that question. Where can we, where do I think some, some new investments might, might, could, or could be made to improve Osage? And I, I really think that we've got some room to grow, again, in boosting our abilities to ensure our college, our, our high school graduates are ready to either enter the career field or, or, or enter the college field. So I think there's some opportunities for us to bring some, bring some programs in-house that we're currently farming out to, I believe, the Camden Town Tech School, both around graphic design, around FFA classes that teach a lot of leadership-related skills. And I think we could bring those in-house. It probably will take a small investment in order to do that, but I think it would pay dividends down the road with, with our, with our students post-graduation.
Thank you very much. Stacy Neal, what program or department within the School of Osage District do you think needs more funding? Are there any areas of the budget where you could see some belt tightening applied?
So as far as more funding goes, I support more funding for our teachers. I support additional teachers, additional paraprofessionals to help the teachers that are trying to get our kids, especially at the younger grades, go in on, on the right start. I think that additional teaching resources is always a good thing, reducing our class sizes, and having the support to the existing teachers through additional paraprofessionals would be great. As far as belt tightening goes, I am a CPA. I do geek out on the numbers. I have looked at some of the financials, so the checkbooks for Osage that are online. I have a number of questions. I don't know at this point that I can pinpoint a, an opportunity to tighten, but I have lots of experience with governments. I do think generally, when you have a lot of money, which Osage is, is a pretty wealthy district, there's an opportunity to spend things that you don't have to spend because you have it available. And I would want to look very closely at what we're spending our funds on and adjust accordingly.
Thank you very much. Kelly Frisella, what program or department within the School of Osage District do you think needs more funding? Are there any areas of the budget where you could see some belt tightening applied?
So my, my immediate reaction to that question stems from a, a direct experience I had going and participating at my first grader and second graders' Valentine parties and just watching the teachers in action and seeing how, how hard they work and honestly, how overwhelming it can be to have so many kids and the ratio just one teacher. So my, my immediate thought is, I would love to see us invest more in some additional paras, particularly at Heritage, perhaps even more for the, the upper elementary as well, just to provide an extra set of hands in the classroom so that the, there's just, those kids are going to benefit from, from those additional personal touches from, from more adults. So more, more paras for sure, and make sure we're investing in our teachers.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next question, Stacy Neal will lead us off. How does social media impact school operation and success? What changes could be made in this regard?
So social media is not my favorite topic. I don't like social media. I kind of had to have my arm twisted a little bit to set up a Facebook account for this campaign. I, I don't like being on social media. I don't like my kids being on social media. I understand it's a part of our culture. I understand it's not going anywhere. But I think the more that we can do to limit the exposure to social media on our children, the, the happier, the more well-adjusted they're going to be. So my goal would be to communicate via social media when we need to, so that parents in the community are aware of what's going on, but to do our best to limit that and make sure that we're not just using social media because it's there, but we're actually communicating pertinent information that, that a social media response makes sense for.
Thank you very much. Kelly Frisella, how does social media impact school operation and success? What changes could be made in this regard?
So I'm going to say that with regards to social media and our children, I think that it can be honestly a big distraction and an unnecessary stress. So I, too, am a huge advocate. Our kids do not need more technology. They don't need more tech time. I'd like to see, I'd like to see that scale back. But the flip side of social media with regards at a district level is that I do think that some of the social media that's out there now really, really does put pressure on the district to be more transparent. And I'm a huge advocate for more transparency at the board level. I think that we owe that to taxpayers, we owe it to parents, we owe it to the teachers to make sure that they are all included and well-aware of what the board's doing so that, so that they have the opportunity to participate and provide feedback as needed.
Thank you very much. Derek Steen, how does social media impact our school operation and success? What changes could be made in this regard?
So I think Stacy and I have something in common on this particular topic because, like Stacy, I did not, I did not have a Facebook page either until this campaign and, and really had not planned on having one ever. But it is obviously a helpful platform and a help, a helpful tool to, to get some messages out, which is what I'm using it for right now. You know, I think social media is here. It's here to stay. There's not much we can do about that if we think it's causing problems. I think we just need to try and address some solutions that, that, where those problems might exist. And I think, again, kind of going back to the leadership and the character development of our student body, I, you know, I still think that that is an important area for us, for us to invest in. The more we invest in our student body with regard to those particular character traits, I think we'll, we'll see better dividends and, and less, less problems with it. Also, I just think it's important for parents and, and general adults in the community to remember that our children are watching and, and reading what we put online. So we also all need to be good examples when we post ourselves on social media.
Thank you very much. And this is our final question. I promise no more, no more bonus questions after this. And this is probably the shortest question, but it could be the hardest one to fit into a minute. And we will start with Kelly on this one. Kelly, what is the most important role of a school board member?
So to me, I think that one of the most important things we can do is make sure that we are, we're listening, that we are making the community and the teachers feel heard. I, I feel like that's very, very important. If there, if there's animosity at the district level and there is no trust, I feel like that there's going to be a fundamental breakdown of how effective we can be. And in the end, then, our children are the ones that are going to pay the price. So the best thing that the board can be is, I think, open to good discussion. I think that once in a while disagreement isn't necessarily a bad thing, that it's important to engage in conversation and discussion amongst one another to ultimately hopefully land at the best choice for, for whatever the, the decision-making process happens to be. So I would just say, you know, being a good listener is extremely important and making sure that we, we feel like everybody has a voice.
Thank you very much. Derek Steen, what is the most important role of a school board member?
So in my mind, the most important role of a school board member or a school board is to hire a superintendent. The superintendent is directly accountable and responsible to the school board and carries out the policies and the direction and the vision and the strategic plan that the school board sets for the school. So clearly, that's an extremely important position at, at a school, the superintendent I'm talking about. So it's, it's incredibly important that the school chooses wisely and, and has good leadership in that position. They also obviously approve, approve the budgets and make sure that the school is running financially healthy. And, and then lastly, it's the school board's job to set the policies for the school. And those policies need to be able to empower and not restrain our teachers from investing into our students, both academically and for their well-being.
Thank you very much. Stacy Neal, what is the most important role of a school board member?
So I believe the most important role is to provide checks and balances related to the school administration. So the school board does hire, retain, or as I understand it, fire the administration. And it is most important that when things are presented to the board, the board take the time to review the documents, to think about it, to ask questions, to make sure they're fully informed, and to not completely trust, more of a trust but verify, everything that's being presented before them. I think it's important to trust the administration to do their job, which is to run the school day-to-day, to manage the teachers, to engage with staff, to be open and honest. It's very important, though, that the board is checking to make sure that things are going well and that they make sure that they're doing their due diligence and, and frankly, doing what the electorate elected them to do.
Thank you very much. That concludes our question and answer portion of the evening. We will now give each candidate an opportunity to make a closing statement of up to two minutes. We will go in reverse order of the opening statements, and again, please be aware of the timekeeper. Kelly, you will start us off. You have two minutes, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to, to everyone again. I appreciate having the opportunity to participate and to share some of my views, so thank you. My closing comments would, would just be that as you are walking into next month, when it's going to be time to cast a vote, please consider the, the kind of where we've been and where we're going. And in my mind, one of the reasons why I'm running is because I firmly believe change is good, and I think change facilitates new ideas. It, it facilitates new thought processes, and it ultimately usually facilitates growth too, in, in a, in a good, positive direction. So I'm running, again, I'm a concerned mom first. I'm here for my kids. I'm vested. It would be my honor to be able to serve the board and to serve the community, the taxpayers, the teachers, and, and the parents, but ultimately, I'm the students. So thank you again.
Thank you very much. Derek Steen, you have two minutes.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, Luke, and, and the chamber for, for this. I think it's probably been, probably been good for us and probably been, been good for the community. In 1995, a solid B-average student graduated Osage. After he graduated, he went to Mizzou. He got an engineering degree, and for the last 22 years, he's been serving farmers in this state, throughout, throughout the state, helping them overcome challenges that they face. And I've traveled the state, I've traveled the country, I've traveled overseas on behalf of Missouri farmers and, and others to do that. I'm not telling you that to brag. I'm actually telling you that all because I want to take this time, because I've not had the chance, just to thank all the folks along the way throughout my career, from kindergarten to now, that's helped me achieve what I've, what success I've achieved in my career. I had a lot of great Osage teachers when I was in school, and I'm not going to even begin to start naming them because I'll leave some out and then I'll feel bad. But lots of teachers that invested in my well-being, in my character, in my leadership skills. They motivated me, even though I was just a B-average student. My success post-high school had very little to do with my academic achievement and more to do really with, really with the impact that those teachers had, as well as obviously other mentors that I had along the way, as well as my family, obviously a big impact as well. So I just want to take this time to thank all those teachers, many who are still with us, probably some that are watching today, and you sharing, certainly sharing some of my success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker tonight with two minutes to have a closing statement, Stacy Neal.
Great. So as many of you can probably imagine, this is not the, the most pleasant opportunity. I know I was extremely nervous before coming in here. You know, the, the lights, the camera, the action. I mean, okay, so not a whole lot of action. But, but one of the things I want to say is, some people were born into this district. I chose this district. When my husband and I were looking at moving towards the lake area, I did extensive research. I looked at Eldon, I looked at Camden Town, which he is a grad of, don't tell anyone, and I looked at Osage. And he may have wanted to go to Camden Town, he may have wanted to be in that district. But when I compared these district, the districts in our area, Osage was stellar. It was not a question for me, I wanted my children to grow up here. I wanted them to have the opportunities here. That hasn't changed. I do have some concerns about some of the policy decisions that have been made recently, but that does not at all shake my resolve to be a member of this community and to have my children graduate from this school. I really want to take the time to engage, to dig in, and to find out what's going on and to try and help make it better. There are many, many things going well for us, and I think we have opportunities to continue and to expand on those. Our education, our fine arts, our athletics, everything, all the opportunities our kids have, they are exceptional here at Osage. So in- the opportunities our kids have, they are exceptional here at Osage. So in, in my nervousness getting ready for this debate, I did look at the Camden Town debates from just earlier this week, and a gentleman quoted George S. Patton, which I hadn't heard this quote, but I thought was amazing. "If everyone is thinking alike, then no one is thinking." I hadn't heard that before, but it really resonates with me. And that's one thing I can attest to. If I am elected, I won't think like everyone else, and I will ask questions. Overall, I hope you get out to vote on April 5th.
Thank you very much. This concludes our 2022 School of the Osage Educational Board Meet the Candidates Forum. Thank you to Lake TV, to KB and 89.3 Key Radio, the Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Camden Area Chamber of Commerce for all their efforts producing the forums over the last couple of evenings. This valuable service to the voters, voters of our communities would not have happened without their selfless efforts of so many folks. Also, thank you to the candidates for your willingness, not only to join us this evening and let the voters hear directly from you, but for your willingness to put your name on the line in an effort to serve your fellow citizens. Thank you again to the viewers and listeners at home. Make sure you get out to the polls on Tuesday, April 5th, and let your voice be heard. Godspeed, everyone. Good night.
Hey Jess. Yeah Nicole. What do you need?
Did you see that new listing in Sunrise Beach?
Yeah, it was just listed two minutes ago.
It has 150 feet of lakefront.
And a brand-new kitchen.
I'm headed out there after I type this email.
I'm on the phone with my clients. Hey, where are you going?
I already put an offer in, cash above list, and it's looking good.
Are you kidding me?
Gosh.
What is COMC? A health center where everyone has access to high-quality, affordable medical, dental, and behavioral health care, regardless of insurance or ability to pay. Offering primary care, preventative, chronic, pediatrics, and OB-GYN. COMC even offers comprehensive dental and same-day emergency care. A health center that focuses on every aspect of your health. Everything your family needs to stay healthy. At COMC, your health is our mission.
Discovered over a century and a half ago, Bridle Cave continues to amaze those who venture through it. As you tour through Bridle Cave, you'll see massive onyx formations, giant columns, and the one and only mystery lake. Bridle Cave's unique stalactite-adorned bridal chapel has provided a truly unique backdrop for over 3,000 couples from around the world. Bridle Cave is open daily, rain or shine. Guided tours leave every few minutes. Come explore the lake's favorite natural attraction. Explore Bridle Cave today.
When you purchase a boat, you're making a pretty big investment. And when you purchase a Crabco LLC roughwater dock, you're protecting that investment in the best ways possible. Roughwater docks are built to be maintenance-free, and they exceed UE standards, so they provide you with peace of mind for years to come. Crabco is a full-service dock company that offers commercial construction, swim docks, add-on slips, and more. They are Ameren UE certified and fully insured. Crabco LLC roughwater docks. The peace of mind you want, the protection you need.
Hey, everyone. Darrell Cunningham with Slumberland Furniture at the Lake. Sitting here today at a little outdoor set. I know this week the weather's calling for some nasty stuff, but before long, we're going to want to get outside and enjoy this great Ozark weather. Come see us. We have tons of stuff available, ready to go, and it's all on sale. Darrell Cunningham with Slumberland Furniture at the Lake, where we're bringing happy home.
Most people don't know which direction they're heading when it comes to retirement. Whether they're still on the journey or already there, at SRG Financial, we have a process, the Mile Marker Formula, that helps you pursue your work optional lifestyle so you can focus on what's most important to you, like your family, or checking off those bucket list items. Start taking the first step toward finding your work optional lifestyle. Call us today at 573-302-7212.
It's new, it's here, and it's now. It's the Lake Expo app. You asked for it. Now Lake Expo is bringing it. Featuring more news, more real estate, with more boating and boats for sale, and more of what's happening at the lake. The Lake Expo app is feeding your need to know. Stay connected to the lake from anywhere. The lake is always just one click away. Download the Lake Expo app today. Available on the App Store and Google Play.
There's a new radio station at the lake. A radio station that's geared towards the community. A radio station where you can have a hand in what we do. Welcome to Key Radio, a community-based radio station that invites you to be a part of the solution. We encourage you to become a content creator. That's right, you provide the content. Listen in at 89.3 or online at keyradio.live. To find out more about becoming a content creator, call 573-280-0532.